It is 8:30. I will go ahead and call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order our first item on the agenda this morning is an approval of the agenda. I would like to pull the DNR farm lease for our county-owned property in Keene. We're working on logistics for that.
Move to approve the agenda with a poll.
A motion.
Do you want to go on a poll?
The DNR farm lease.
Okay, very good.
Motion from Commissioner Gross to pull the amended agenda.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard. Steve, have you had any correspondence in regards to the online commenting?
I have not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second, motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the bills and vouchers, a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Minutes from June 14th were in the packet.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the minutes as presented, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Item two, the request for approval to utilize enterprise lease program for four additional 2023 squads. Our Sheriff Empting is here. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, thanks for having me this morning. I am here today to request four additional squad cars for 2023. These squad cars would be for warrants and transports and investigations. The total of four cars, the annual estimated payment would be $34,740. These would be leased for four years because they are not patrol units, they are investigator units and transport units. One of them is a Chevy Traverse. Unfortunately, we're not able to get our vans any longer for transports, so one of them is a seven-passenger Chevy Traverse, not the most ideal vehicle for transports, but it's kind of the day and age we're in right now with these vehicles. And also to go back to a question Commissioner Campbell had on June 14th in regards to how the payment would be made, I did meet with Auditor Johnson and it would come out of the Internal Service account as well.
Move for approval.
Motion from Commissioner Ebinger to approve the request for the lease program, a second from Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Request is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four this morning, or item three then, would be the request to fill a vacancy for the full-time deputy and to promote a deputy to sergeant sheriff.
Correct. So Lieutenant Dave Johnson has submitted his notice of retirement. We wish Dave very well in retirement. He spent 28 years with the sheriff's office, worked several divisions and several areas within the sheriff's office, and was always the utmost professional in doing so. So we congratulate Dave and we are happy for him, but it's kind of a loss for us. But we do have to replace Dave's position, and this is a budgeted type thing, with Dave at the higher rate on the county grid and not replacing a lieutenant, rather replacing a sergeant. This would be a savings within our 2022 budget as well as a potential savings for our 2023 budget as well. The savings that we would have for 2022 would be roughly $12,000, and that's with the promotion of a sergeant and with the payout that Lieutenant Johnson received as well.
Questions from the board? Campbell and then Commissioner Ebinger.
So Sheriff, you currently have four lieutenants?
That's correct.
And so your plan is to keep that at three then?
Yes, through a little bit.
And then add another sergeant?
Correct, yeah. Through some reorganizing of the department, we would move down to three lieutenants. We would combine investigations and patrol into an operations division and the additional sergeant would then go into investigations and be a frontline supervisor in the investigations, which they currently really don't have. They have an administrative lieutenant in there. This sergeant would be carrying a caseload and he would be there to be their frontline supervisor to answer any questions they may have on the scene and things of that nature.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Do you have a promotion in mind or does that a process you can start?
We currently have a list from our last promotional process when Sergeant Deekman and Sergeant Reno were promoted, and we would use that current list.
Any further questions from the board?
Move to approve the request.
Motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the request, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. It is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four this morning is a request for approval to fund demo of our cold storage tent at the Joint Highway Facility. We have our facilities director, Joe Olson, and our county engineer, Justin Zorum. Good morning.
Morning, Madam Chair. Board. So I'll run through this. The, so if you recall, weeks back, we had a project, a cold storage project that was awarded in the amount of $433,000. It was a bid project and it had been approved by the board. Part of that process was demoing the building and we were a little bit later on on this because we teamed up with MinDOT on this and because MinDOT owns one-third of this building, current building, so they're going to be taking on one-third of the demo, proposed demo costs here. So we were waiting for them to, they have another similar tent salt project that we're going to talk next about, but they wanted to do an alternate bid in there to demo this cold storage as well, so they wanted to see what that number came out and unfortunately it came really, really high on our end. So we decided, Justin and I went out and got a couple more quotes to take down this building. We're proposing to start this project mid-July. So right now, the numbers came in where the county share, it was a total, the low quote was $55,000, so the total cost on the county's end would be $36,667. So if you take that and you add it to the $433,000 total project cost, we have $469,967. So we had an original budget of $450,000, so we are, this look, we're over about $19,967, but we do have within the bond $87,000 left. So that's where that offset would happen. So.
Board questions? Commissioner Ebinger.
Our ownership in this is one-third?
We're two-thirds. Sorry, yeah. Two-thirds and they're one-third, yep.
Okay.
Yep. So, and they are, actually, MinDOT has jumped in and taken care of all the, some demo costs of electrical stuff, so their team has helped us out that way too. So we've saved a little money on that and by them doing that. I believe the county actually, go ahead.
The county will be doing some of their own removals as well, some of the concrete inside, trying to save some money too on the demo costs, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just had somewhere in my head that City of Morehead had a third of it.
Yeah.
Just that, on the cold storage, it's just MinDOT and the county. The other portions of the building are different.
Okay. Move for approval.
Motion to approve the request from Commissioner Ebinger.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Gross to clarify, that would then be the awarding the low bid.
Correct, yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The request for approval to fund a portion of the salt and sand tent project.
Yes, so this is the one, Commissioner Ebinger, this is the one that it's one-third. The City of Morehead, MinDOT and Clay County each own this by a third. So MinDOT did take the lead on this, did a bid process, and they came back with a total project cost of $765,202. So our county cost would be $252,068, and it's kind of a two-part project that's going on right now. So that $252,000 that we're going to be paying is to construct the tent itself, and there's another second part that MinDOT and the City of Morehead, actually, City of Morehead's kind of taken the lead in getting prices on this, but we're waiting for bunkers to be put inside the tent. So that, currently right now, it's had some problems separating the sand and salt. You know, they all three come and they put a big pile in, and I think they have sections that they dig off of, but this will really, this is what all three entities wanted, so they could separate their own inventory of their sand. So that, we have a projected estimate at about 50 grand on the county's share side of it, so plugging in this $252,000, and then that 50,000 coming, we should be right on budget, maybe a couple thousand dollars over on that, but we should be right on that 300,000 mark. So we're hoping in two weeks to come back on that with total numbers on that, and City of Morehead and MinDOT have to get approval on that second quote. But for today's purposes, we're, they were hoping to start this project end of July, so they would like to order the building and get her going, so.
Move approval.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve the request.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Justin, did you want to do a quick update on Cassaw 52?
Yes. So our Cassaw 52 project from Saban to I-94, we did get done paving last Friday. The contractor will be removing traffic control tomorrow, and then I will update the county website when we do have a definite date for striping. But the project went really well and was a much-needed improvement.
I would offer that the three major paving projects that went through and went so smoothly, and I had a resident call me yesterday that said he was able to go to work without spilling coffee all over, so.
That's good.
He also appreciated 31.
Yes. 31 was in rough shape and now it rides really, really nice.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. The next item on the agenda this morning is a request to move forward with a remodel project of the women's bathrooms in the family service center using, utilizing ARPA funds.
Yes, so this is actually the final project within the list of items that were approved. We had 1.2, just over 1.2 million approved early on in the process for all the items that qualified, so this is our final, final project here. So just to explain why we're doing the women's and not the men's, the women's get used way more over there. There's a lot more women over in that building over the years. That, two different worlds, we felt the men's are in good shape, they're older, but the women's are definitely in some need of remodel. So we've got six bathrooms here proposed and we've went out and gotten two quotes and we're proposing to take the low quote. And with construction, low quote, we do have some plumbing and added costs in there. So total project cost for this would be $65,457.
Thank you, and I neglected to ask this before. Curious, will you be replacing diaper-changing tables?
Yep.
And I would also request that there be those included in the male bathrooms as well. I know you're not remodeling those, but.
That's a pretty minimal cost we can do.
Right, I'd like those added, just because I know that's a problem.
Yep, no, that's, that can be done. As far as the remodel, we're getting new floors, new stalls, reusing the counters. We are reusing the new faucets we purchased with ARPA funds, so. But, and then the stalls themselves are really small, so we're doing some redesigning to make it a little bit bigger. So it should be a pretty good project, but yeah, I will put that down too.
Further discussion?
Just on the budget, I was going to ask too, is with this project, we did have a budget of 50,000. So as you can see, we're over around 15, just over 15,000, but when you, this is our final project, with the 1.2 million budget, we are actually pretty close at 2,470 left over, so we're, we're not under, but we are definitely over on this project.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Ebinger, a second, or motion to approve from Commissioner Gross, a second from Commissioner Ebinger to clarify, that's also the low, low bid contractor of TUF Power. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Okay.
Thank you.
So did you finalize that building committee meeting yet, or?
No, haven't, haven't done that. I think we, I think we kind of jumped into this week, got a little busy, but.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get back with you guys, probably after the fourth, at some point there.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request for approval to auction a 2003 Freightliner semi-tractor. County Administrator St. Larson, I think to clarify, it's not in the memo until later down. This is a solid waste.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, I think over the last few weeks, solid waste staff have been before, before you requesting the purchase of a used semi-trailer and also a new semi-trailer. And I think as part of that presentation, the 2003 Freightliner semi-tractor was going to be the, would be the tractor that they would auction off once they received that new, new tractor. The plan was it's going to take about six months for the new tractor to get here, and so they were hoping that they would be able to utilize this until that new tractor came. Unfortunately, we blew a head gasket and the ability to fix it, it costs more than what it's, what it is worth. It has about 700,000 miles. Solid Waste staff have done some research and have indicated that there is a market for, for this semi-tractor even though it's not working. And so the request today would be that we allow them to put that up for, for auction this week. With that, I deal for any questions.
Thank you, and this item was presented by Brett Rice to the SWAC committee on Thursday to make us aware of that.
Move approval.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve, second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion?
Just want to point out that at SWAC meeting, when we listed the transportation equipment that we have, and I asked some questions from the city about their current semi-tractors that they currently use that will no longer be used by them once we open a new transfer station, and Steve Iverson did feel that there would be a little, there would be still some life left in those. And of course, one of our semis, it's pretty much used to just go from Holly to Fargo with our Leach Eight, and so certainly we could use something more on a used scale for that. And I think Steve was going to, was open to, you know, maybe working a deal out with, for that equipment. So I don't know, Steve, if you want to follow up with that. But if we can have that opportunity to take advantage of some internal equipment that's already there, that would be excellent to have, so.
We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports. Commissioner Ebinger, would you like to start?
On Wednesday, the 22nd, I attended a, oh no, I'm sorry. Yes, Wednesday, the 22nd, I attended the diversion finance committee meeting remotely. We discussed the sales tax collection over in the North Dakota side. It is on track and above the projections for that sales tax. That's going well. The budget's on track to be below the budget for this year. We did have a, and this will also be covered in the main meeting, we forwarded this information on, but the last MOU necessary for the channel, diversion channel was passed on. It was with SBA Communications on a tower, and that completes all MOUs necessary for the diversion channel itself, which is kind of a sort of a milestone in the progress of this, this entire operation. Thursday, I also attended a joint Chamber of Commerce and EDC meeting, executive board meeting. It was moderated by Casey Steinbacher with Economic Leadership. He's been retained to kind of guide what they're referring to as fueling our future 2.0, and we have strategy planning on that. Discussed some of the economic developments and workforce and public policy, data analytics, community initiatives, and then some of the leadership issues. We also moved into the financial model. Part of it is going to be public sector investment, and we had a pretty good discussion on that with the changes that are occurring over with Cass County, possibly starting a job development authority. And that is something that, as they progress, we're going to have to stay on top of that. And then we looked at a governance model, and one of the things that was clearly put together is we need to avoid a pay-to-play. They do want to have investors and develop their private funding more, but continued relationship with the governmental entities is also part of the long-term plan. On the 27th yesterday, make sure I'm not missing something here. Oh, 22nd, the diversion authority board met. It was a fairly short meeting. Again, we discussed what I presented in the financial committee, budget's on track, and so are the collections of sales tax. And again, the final MOU from Mr. Shockley on the diversion channel. And Commissioner Campbell may have some additional here. I don't have anything really beyond that in my notes. And then yesterday, I attended the Morehead EDA meeting. I wanted to hear more about West Central Initiative, and Rebecca Peterson, who's Director of Development for West Central, was doing a presentation there. I went, I was very impressed with her presentation. I understand she's going to be presenting the commission here in a couple of weeks. One of the things they touched on is that there is some funding through DEED on the Main Street revitalization project, which in our case is Highway 10 corridor. They've also assisted in a number of childcare grants, resiliency grants, and small business grants from DEED. And then the industrial park, Derek LaPointe gave a presentation, and the industrial park has got two new contracts that are being signed for properties out there, and there's a number of inquiries. It's going very well out in the Morehead Industrial Park as far as getting vacancies filled and properties sold. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Commissioner Campbell?
On June 21st, we had a PIC meeting, Personal Issues Committee meeting, items discussed there. We talked about, there was a presentation on implementing a referral program for corrections, for recruiting corrections officers. There'll be more to come on that soon. We talked a little bit about the new IRS managed reimbursement rates, the effective July 1st. We had some discussion about the per diem rates that we pay to our citizens at a 10-county meetings for, you know, on our behalf as part of committees. That will be a topic of conversation that we'll have when we set the new per diem rates in December. Steve?
Yep.
Okay. And then we also had some discussion regarding our senior admin position down the road, and also some potential changes within HR, just to kind of be ready for some retirements that are going to be coming up. That, on June 22nd, I attended the Prairie Lake Solid Waste meeting. We got a report to recap on the fire that had occurred there, and thankfully there, the, it did not, it did not appear to be too significant. There, the plant manager, there's concern about the amount of wet garbage that comes into the facility that's, that doesn't do that well, and it can also lead to composting issues, which also then causes fires. And lithium batteries, of course, are an issue, whether they go into that place or a landfill. There needs to be some education, better education on what to do with lithium batteries when they're no longer useful. We also, we also got a report that our property insurance was going to raise from $219,000 to $245,000 for the next year, but our, that also included a $5 million increase in, in the property value itself. So it's a 12% increase in insurance premiums and a 10% increase in valuation of the building. Okay, then on the 23rd, we had a solid waste advisory committee meeting. We get our, our monthly update from construction engineers. We had a discussion on the remaining items at the landfill with Joe Johnson from Comstock Construction. I think we're getting closer to resolving a lot of those issues that are still outstanding. And then we, we had a continued discussion about planting native grasses at the Resource Recovery Center, and Tony Nelson came and he basically, he looked at the entire property and he felt that there's probably about three-quarters of an acre that would serve a purpose for a native, or that type of native grasses. So, but that, that wouldn't even be planted until next spring, so there's a little bit more time on there. And then we had a Resource Recovery Construction meeting yesterday, and Steve Iverson from the city is working with the seed contractor on the remaining parcels about looking at changing the seed mixture a little bit to allow for, for some additional types of grass seed that goes in there that can also help, I guess, with the pollinator. Have a question?
Yeah. With that change in the grass mixture, will it be a lower maintenance grass then?
It, it, it will be somewhat lower. I think the, the plan will still be that they'll, they'll still have to cut it, but.
Maybe not as often.
Yeah, and again, I think that question can go to Steve Iverson, and I'm not really up on, on what he's talking about.
I think they talked about implementing some more clover that are allowing a lower height, but still offer the opportunity for pollinator activity.
Thank you.
And then we had the, I gave a perm update, and then we, we also gave an update on where we are with the contingencies. And then that same day, we had the diversion authority board meeting, which Commissioner Ebinger reported on. The only thing that I would add is that we also got a report from the Corps of Engineers, and one of the, one of the big things that are going on right now at one of the sites is the installation of the inlet gates. There are massive gates that are going into place, and once that's done, you'll done, you'll really see how, and that's basically right at the inlet to the, to the diversion channel, just how significant that is. And it's quite a site. And of course, they continue to pour concrete, which also puts a demand on concrete where sometimes other things have to wait. We had to, on our own project, at the Resource Recovery Facility, they had to wait a number of days to be able to get on the list for, for having concrete delivered. So, throughout the metro area, there's quite the demand for concrete. And then on, yesterday afternoon, we did have the construction managers meeting. All seems to be going well. It's finally dried out. They're working quite heavily now in the area of, which will be the tipping floor. And they, I believe this Friday, they will have the final pour on what is referred to as Area B, which is the administrative area. The household hazardous waste interior floor was poured yesterday. So, there's a lot of progress being made on there. We were able to go out and take another field tour, or actually get down and look at that yesterday. It's pretty impressive. It's going to be a big facility.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Gross?
Last Friday, I went over, attended the Dave Johnson retirement thing. Had a good representation there, good, good program for Dave. Yesterday, I went up to the eight of the Wild Rise Watership. And there's, they had nine people committed, but two people didn't show up, so we didn't have a quorum on that. So, there was just this, we just went over some of the things that we could discuss without, without a quorum. We didn't embolden anything. And it was just a matter of the projects that are coming up and what we're going to be working on. Also had one resident give me a call on our landfill out there in Holly. He gave a good report of that. He really was appreciative of the way he's a dumping, dumping garbage out there and stuff like that. He was very happy with it. So, that's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Kaylee?
Thank you. On Tuesday of last week, the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council met, and Rory Beal from Public Health and Karen Skorsky gave their presentation on changing the narrative around mental health and suicide. I think that was very well-received by that group. Thank you to them for coming and doing that presentation. Thursday, the 23rd, I went with Mr. Bavari to adult basic education. We were meeting with them to talk about some of the barriers that their students are facing in the community and how those have been exacerbated by COVID, just to kind of dream about ways that we could work together, and also identify some of those challenges that they're facing. Following that, I did swing by Morehead Business Association event. They're certainly a vibrant entity in Morehead and the surrounding area promoting our local businesses. That evening, I attended the CAP LP Board meeting. That group has started opening their meetings with a land acknowledgement statement. We approved the Head Start self-assessment. I am constantly amazed at the wonderful work that Head Start teachers do, not just for their students, but how they view the whole family and work with the whole family. Thank you to them for that investment in our families. They looked at an organization diversity analysis and analysis of the board. So, they're working really hard on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And they would like to be a leader in diversity, equity, and inclusion work in the area. And as a part of that, they are striving to make sure that both their staff and their board are representative of the people they serve proportionally. So, they set some benchmarks, and there's good work being done there. We also looked at an approved dental insurance rates and the new IRS mileage reimbursement rate. And we approved travel expenses for 10 staff members to attend the National Community Action Partnership Annual Convention. This is a really big deal. There are, a large number of those staff are being, getting their certification for CCAP, which is this huge training program, and then you take a giant test at the end. And it's really a big achievement. So, they'll be walking across the stage and being acknowledged for that. And they also have some staff members that are being recertified for that CCAP program. And then they also have a cohort that's been working with whole-family work. And they will be attending the conference to look at that as well. The group work camp has been going on this last week. Thank you to Morehead Area Public Schools for allowing a lot of those kids coming in from different areas and also from our area to stay at Horizon Middle School as they work on housing projects around the area. As of that meeting, there were about 14 houses completed that they had done work on to make them more efficient, more accessible, and more livable to keep folks in their homes. So, wonderful things happening there. I also attended the Morehead Economic Development Meeting that Commissioner Ebinger presented on already. He covered that well. And lastly, we didn't have a meeting, but just a note, the Clay County Collaborative Coordinator Jill Ambule has resigned. I mentioned that previously. And via an electronic vote, we've decided to move ahead with interim contracts for Carolyn Sternod, who had been the previous coordinator for that group, as well as Lynette Quarter, who's been a longtime member of that group, to fill in while we search for a new coordinator for the collaborative. Thank you to them for stepping up to fill in so we can keep things moving ahead and keep the reporting going on and services. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Last week, I also attended the Personnel Issues Committee that has been covered. Commissioner Campbell covered that well. I attended the Prairie Lakes meeting that Commissioner Campbell also reported on. Also, an item of note is problematic to some of the loads is that a lot of the loads are coming in quite wet. And so, because there's not floor drains, a lot of water is coming in with those loads. And the board had some, some pretty substantial discussion on how to mitigate that and deal with their private haulers that seem to be the culprit of some of that. That afternoon, I attended a planning meeting for the extension office support position. We did review resumes and our planning interview scheduling out of that. The next day, I attended the SWAC Committee meeting at, here in this room. We did have an update from construction engineers, a drone footage of the Resource Recovery Facility. Steve, I think, sorry, I think that would be helpful for the whole board to see. It's quite fascinating. And did discuss the prairie native grasses. Further, certainly, this board in, in the city of Morehead can work to, to find something that is, is best suited for that. I think that facility in itself is, is so, contributes so much to reducing the trash stream and, and landfill piles and recycling as much material as possible. So, holistically, it's, it's such a great venture. I did attend a solid waste interview, director interview meeting that, following that, we did have another candidate. We're working with staff to determine the best foot forward for that, what that department looks like. For the public, the staff members from solid waste that were located in this facility, they're now located at the government center, until we're able to finalize the Resource Recovery Facility. So, that's a change for the public to note. And that evening, I also attended the CAP LP Board meeting that Commissioner Kaylee addressed. We did have some substantial discussion in regards to strategic planning and direction. And, and I agree, that board has always been so active in pursuing the betterment and further training for staff. And it used to be that we had two staff members that were CCAP certified. And so now, it's really exciting to see how they've grown up on that list. Yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Board meeting. We did have executive director review. The executive committee did not finalize the contract on that, so they did finalize a 30-day extension. I am so pleased with the work that the executive director, Donna Baker, does there. They're quite, I would say they're the leader in Minnesota in regards to mental health, joint mental health approach. And I can also say that in their budget for 2023, there's been an additional full-time crisis services employee that they are budgeting. So, that will directly benefit the conversations that we've had locally in regards to crisis services. So, that's an exciting proposal. And then that afternoon, yesterday afternoon, I did attend the Resource Recovery Facility meeting, that construction meeting that Commissioner Campbell did report on. We did have a tour of that site, and, and it is enormous. It will, it will serve the needs quite well. I have, over the last week, had phone calls with the city council members from the city of Saban in regards to coordinating the opening of Highway 52. Even though there still are signs up, the road is open. As, as our county engineer did say, they'll be taking those signs down this week. And then had a citizen, resident in Scree Township member curious about the bridge, a replacement timeline for a bridge that's been on the replacement for a while. And the last item to note is that our meeting next Tuesday will be at 1:30 instead of 8:30. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 21st, I attended the PIC meeting that's been covered well by both commissioners. On the 22nd, we had county management. We focused a lot on budget, Budget 2023. We also talked about workforce challenges within our departments. We also talked about the frontline, frontline funding for essential workers. Just a note, I think as of last week, they had originally planned for 667,000 people to submit. They already had 750,000 that have submitted for that funding resource. On the 22nd, I met with Brian Meltin and Matt Jacobson for upcoming planning commission. They have a meeting this evening with the, the big agenda. On the 22nd, we also had a building, or, excuse me, let's see, we had, I met with Robert Wilson in regards to the Red River Regional Dispatch Center, and also talking, shared information on 2023 budgets. On the 23rd, a meeting opioid funding discussion. As we've had some discussions in our finance committee, the commissioners asked for some additional information about possible needs from public health and social services. And so, they've been invited to come to our next, next finance meeting, which is tomorrow morning. On 24th, I met with Mr. Meltin, Sheriff Empteen, and Kerry Tooten, as to kind of discuss that as we make the transition from men, men services, medical services to ACH here. More coming on that. Participated or attended Lieutenant Johnson's open house. We want to wish him very well in his retirement, thank him for the excellent work that he provided the citizens of Clay County. Yesterday, talked to Steve Iverson on a series of, from the city of Morehead, a series of topics in regards to the Resource Recovery Center, and participated also that afternoon at the owner's meeting, the tour. Would just note, I know that it's been well documented. We've had some different discussions during this board about, about the challenging winter that we had and the winter conditions and some of the watering issues. We did get a new, new update as far as a potential substantial completion date, and we're looking at kind of that first week of December right now. So, would, would just note, there is a vaccine clinic coming up tomorrow. There's two different sessions. They start at around 9:00 or 9:15, and then again, at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock. I think the one of note, starting, starting this week, will have the Pfizer, the Pfizer shop for six-month to four-year-olds available. And so, if you can go to our website to, to make the reservation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Steve. Brian, do you have anything? Colleen? Do note, we were able to get the meeting done before schedule. It's funny what you have a county picnic planned. We can get stuff done. Any, any other items this morning? If not, we're adjourned.